The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, White Pine County Commission Meeting, March 24th, 2021.
As is our normal procedure, we'll take this first moment with me for prayer and meditation. Okay, we'll open the meeting, and the first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment for today? Can you lay it on the phone, Mike? And on the phone, anyone in the audience?
Yes. I'm Cody Kuns over the phone.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Cody Kuns. I want to comment on item 2A in regards to the letter that you're planning to rewrite for SNPLMA.
Are you outside? There's a lot of wind in the background. We can hardly hear you. Can you try to start again? I could get inside somewhere.
Yeah, can you hear me better than I am?
Yeah, a lot better. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I'm commenting towards the item that Mr. Bullis has on there regarding writing a letter to SNPLMA regarding the priorities for the round 18. And I would support that you would bump the White Pine County Fairgrounds upgrade to number one priority. And the reason that I say that is because it's an existing facility that already has budgeted for maintenance, and I believe that it's going to save the county more money to first do that project other than these other projects that require a lot more operation and maintenance budget that the county may not have. And so, the building that is being proposed in that project will definitely bring more people to the county, provide areas for large events in the wintertime. So I would support that that would be bumped to the number one priority if we do send the letter. And so, I'm not saying that the other projects aren't great because I agree that they do great for the county. I just think that you should reconsider those priorities if you do write that letter. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the phone that would like to speak in public comment?
Yes, Chairman, this is Caroline MacIntosh. Item 2, I would like to comment on that agenda item. And I, the Nevada Northern Railway was bumped to the second level, and I would like to see it move back up to the first level. We're embarking on a train to trails program, and it's very vital for the whole project for White Pine County Tourism and Recreation as we build more single-track trails. It's quite an economic generator for our community, and I would certainly like to have that included in the letter of re-prioritize as far as the first ranking, as far as the first level of projects for SNPLMA. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else on the phone? Have you seen anyone, Mike?
No, sir.
Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to the audience. Please come forward and state your name.
Hi, my name is Tabitha Hamilton. I was asked to submit or read aloud a public comment from Catherine Brunson, who is the chairman of the Act District 13. This was her public comment that was submitted to the SNPLMA, and she asked that I do read aloud here, so hopefully I don't fumble over my words. She said, "The goal of White Pine County Fairgrounds upgrade is to elevate and enhance. To elevate the facility while also preserving its history is important, but to do so while also elevating the lives of those living in the community is pivotal. This project is pivotal. I would, it would create new opportunities to do tourism within White Pine County while enhancing the history that is White Pine County Fairgrounds. While some proposals have redistribution of wealth impact, which is monies from within White Pine County that is redistributed within the county, the White Pine County Fairgrounds upgrade proposal has new money impact, which is monies from outside of the county that is brought in. For example, the average daily spending of a tourist in White Pine County is $113. White Pine County Fairgrounds and tourism brings in around 4,000 tourists for a four-day event totaling an estimated $1,880,000 in new monies from the community. As the host of the single largest event in White Pine County is the priority of the Act District 13 to ensure that this event continues to grow in both safety and success. Therefore, it is important for the future that this event in the White Pine County Fairgrounds does not become stagnant in its development. Tourism declines without question in colder months. The project, this project is funded to allow larger events to occur year-round, seeing a potential new money benefit in White Pine County. White Pine County Tourism and Recreation have worked so hard to draw tourism into White Pine County during those months. By enhancing the facilities, including an indoor event center, White Pine County will be able to help in their efforts by providing a space to host events during inclement weather." Besides the positive impact on tourism, the other distinctive qualities of the White Pine County Fairgrounds upgrade proposal is that the upgrades can and will be maintained. Monies have been identified and will be allocated to a full-time caretaker position to ensure that all upgrades and infrastructure are maintained and kept operational. The project, once completed, will become an overwhelming bur, will not become an overwhelming burden, burden to the Act District 13 or to White Pine County. With the help of SNPLMA, the SNPLMA committee, the project would succeed in elevating White Pine County and enhancing White Pine County Fairgrounds. I ask that you please reconsider the importance of the White Pine County Fairgrounds upgrade. Catherine Brunson, Chairman of Act District 13.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience with public comment? Seeing no one else, George? See, I didn't forget you. One gone left to the other.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, to date, I've not received your written statements regarding the numerous complaints or concerns that I brought before you, you and the county commission for the past several months. I deserve more than just a cold shoulder, a want-equal protection under the law. It's what I pay taxes for. You step forward now, step up to the plate. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 2A, 1A, you're considering writing a letter to SNPLMA requesting reconsideration of priorities that were submitted. I support that consideration. Heritage parks should be scrapped altogether. You would be taking prime commercial property off the tax rolls. National studies show, have shown and cautioned that you do not build parks next to the trucks though. We're ignoring that. You want to talk about child safety, family safety? Then let's be serious. There are plenty of parks throughout Ely and the county that need some improvement. We do not need another park. The All-Weather Event Center should be the number one priority. It will allow for a greater variety of events to be held throughout the year and bring in a greater variety of visitors to experience our area, including the railroad. The railroad should not be placed, excuse me, the railroad should be placed last or eliminated altogether. In the near future, they may have five miles of track rerouted. They have suffered rumored embezzlement to the tens of thousands of dollars. They do not operate under the Nevada Open Meeting law, even though they spend hundreds of thousands of taxpayers' dollars. The manager manages the facility and his wife is the bookkeeper. That is blatant nepotism, which is not allowed under the NRS. The railroad should not be on the list for grants until a change is made. We have to have accountability, Mr. Chairman. We're not getting that. The railroad may impact to some degree, but not nearly as much as an event center, which would have a greater ability to affect wider financial benefit throughout our different communities in the county. The railroad doesn't do that. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda 1, E, 4, and 5, the county needs to stop participation in that road repair project. Western Oil and others are responsible for that. They need to hire a contractor. The county should not be competing against the private sector. Taxpayers' money need to be and equipment, and those employees that we hire need to address county projects only and not subsidize private business in violation of state NRS. Mr. Chairman, I want to remind you that the new parking lot at the convention center has not put in the sidewalk. We're putting handicap people and those in wheelchairs out in the street when access that facility. That needs to be changed. Mr. Chairman, per Governor Sislex's Directive 024, Section 5, which states individuals not exempted by this directive will, guidance issued by the Nevada Health and Sport should require to cover their nose, mouth with a face mask when covering one in a public space. Here we are now, over 20 meetings, we still have violations on. Mr. Bullis is at the head of that. Either we have rules and regulations or we don't. If you don't want to comply with the law, I understand that. I don't like a lot of other laws, but you took an oath to enforce the law. You're not above it, so either you comply with the law or you bring those that are not in compliance within compliance, or you all resign.
Your two minutes are up, George. Thank you.
I need some answers.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience, one last call on the phone, anybody on the phone? No one on the phone, anyone else in the audience, last call? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll move on to page 2, and we'll go ahead and end 9:13. Let's do the set that you have. We'll go to the last page, and I'll vote for motion to approve. Vote for group.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, none, passionless. Although we're down to item C under untimed items, approval of the following county commission meetings, February 24th, 2021, special joint and budget workshop on March 8th, 2021, the budget workshop on March 9th, 2021, and the budget workshop and county commission on March 10th, 2021.
Chairman, I'd like to remove March 10th minutes. We weren't able to quite get those completed. What was in to this agenda? We'll put that one on the next one.
Okay. So we'll eliminate the March 10th meeting and let's approve all the other ones, the 24th, the 8th, and the 9th. Anybody that had additions, corrections, or subtractions?
I just have one little one under the March 9th one, under Christie's. She's talking about the breaks needing to be replaced in the swimming pool, and I think it says breaks. It's minor. I got there a little bit earlier. I went on ahead and just whispered in your ear. But other than that one, I'll make a motion to approve all three of them.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionless? I think we can go to the 9:15.
Yep.
It's 9:15, so we will go to page 2. Item 1 is notice of timed items and agenda items, and item A is the 9:15 Rural Desert Southwest Brownfields Coalition. Item 1 is discussion for possible action, the approval to appoint a new representative to the Rural Desert Southwest Brownfield Coalition. Lorena F. Dugger of Knight County, Knight County Assistant Manager, is she here?
She's on the phone.
You're on the phone? Go ahead, Lorena.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and White County Commissioners, and thank you for putting urgent that item on. Unfortunately, you know, Brian Tile has resigned from the coalition, and we're asking for another representative. And on behalf of the coalition, we want to thank Brian Tile for your commitment to the coalition and to White Pine County.
Okay. James, would you have a suggestion for someone to replace Brian? He was an attorney on that, or somebody, he only had two people in your office.
Yeah, I mean, I, if you want somebody from my office, I would suggest that you put me on it. Otherwise, if somebody else wants to do it, they can. I don't want to.
Anyway, the commissioners want to do that? I think you're the right choice, and if you're willing, okay.
Wait, wait just a second. Lorena, how often do you guys meet, or is it just as an on required basis?
We meet quarterly, and then, you know, if there's something that is needed from the coalition by your representative, we're always available, but quarterly meetings aren't that.
Okay. And I did know that maybe Mrs. Hilton in your office might be a good choice if you prefer not to. I thought, is that too close as far as the assessor?
No, I'm not concerned with that right now. I'm concerned with being down to attorneys, and she is handling a great deal of the criminal caseload, and that happens all times of the business hours. So in the future, I certainly would be open to that, but I would throw myself on the coalition will say if it pleases the.
Okay. I make a motion. Thank you, appreciate that. I make a motion to approve District Attorney, District Attorney, James Beecher, to replace Brian Tile.
Second. Motion by Lori, second by Travis. We're going to be appointing District Attorney James Beecher to Lorena, so we'll have a vote. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So there you go. Mr. Beecher will send you or you can hold in the county court to give the information for signing him up and his address and whatnot. Is that okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. We're done with that item, so let's see if we can move on. Let's go to 10:15. Let's go to page 4, item 2. Item A is items from elected officials. Item A is the county commission. One is Commissioner Ian Bullis. Item A is a discussion for possible action, the approval to write a letter or multiple letters to SNPLMA requesting consideration of priorities submitted to by the board of county commissioners. Ian?
Okay. I want to clarify where this started. The original letter, at least when I was approached, I was approached by Mr. Horvath, director at the Tour and Rec, and it was regarding the prioritization of the trails project, which is separate from what we prioritize, is something else. And that project didn't make the cut, and he made a really solid case, and I agree with him that that really deserves a second look. And so, in the midst of that discussion, Mr. Howell expressed that he would like to maybe do something similar, at least have a discussion in case some of us were having buyer remorse over the original priorities that we put together. So that's what.
And that being, thanks, Ian. That being said, and I think right now would be a good time for us to do a little roundtable with each commissioner to see if they have any remorse, if they have another item they'd like to present, and then I have some information at the end that I'll speak to, and then we'll go ahead and see if there's another direction we'd like to go. So is that your comment, Ian? Would you like to say more?
Couple, couple things. I haven't changed my opinion, and I haven't changed the fact that I think we all remember this was a very difficult team, because we would have picked them all if we could have their all freaking great projects. We support every one of them. Man, it was, it was like you nearly came down to just rolling the dice and picking one, you know? So we had to prioritize some of them. I'm concerned at showing some level of instability, and maybe that's the wrong word. I don't want to send a bad message to the SNPLMA board that we made priorities, we discussed it at length, and then at the end of the day, they made recommendations based on what we told them, and then we come back and say, wait, we don't want to do it. So I'm concerned about how that looks and how that sounds. Also, when it comes to the fairgrounds, I feel like SNPLMA is not their only source of funding, and I'm shooting from the hip. The DA's office probably could help me with the legality of this, but I have a feeling they may have some options to seek some private investors or some loans or some things to, because that's a project that can bring in for-profit promoters to do events and to rent the center. I have a feeling there may be some other routes that could be sought to get funding to build something like that, and I think they should because it is a really great project. So my opinion is I would not like to change what we said, and I would even be willing to help beyond the team to be creative and track down funding, especially to help the DA folks.
Yeah, Travis, thank you.
Yeah, I just, where we're at, I tend to like the fairgrounds, the event center, kind of two reasons. One, as we heard from Bill on the budget, you know, the whole parks maintenance and, you know, we're going to have, you know, we're going to have an expansion of park folks, and we're going to need, not, and I love the park idea, but this is, I think if we're where we're at this time and where our budget's at, and also, you know, that brings me concern of going ahead with that huge of a park this time. Secondly, this facility would bring in, bring in another, another thing for Ely that, you know, would level us out instead of just, you know, more heavy tourism in the summer. And I think it would be smart, just from a diversification standpoint, that we kind of have, you know, start, you know, something that would bring more people in just for that, and then these other projects start to look a lot, you know, more affordable, you know, as we get more and more people coming in and spending money here. So I just, yeah, I, like I said, I like them all, it's a core of all, but I think I'd like to see the fairgrounds get the nod just because I think it's the best thing for your buck. Also, there's a lot of dedicated folks on the DA board, so there is, you know, people that will be there to, you know, look after that as it's built and make sure it's, you know, taken good care of. There's a lot of people that really value that facility down there.
Thank you. Lori?
Yeah, believe it or not, I'm actually in Ian's corner on this. So I do think that the county could write a letter of support. It had to do the, under the SNPLMA capital improvements, and it was a Forest Service project that they had been approached on and they had worked hard on, and I do think that was, I don't know why it scored low. And that's the thing, too, with Louie Ford. These people have already gone through the process. They're all volunteers. They all have projects, and I just, I'm sorry, I don't think it's appropriate to go back and say, oops, we made a mistake.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
But I would have been happy, you know, back then, either way, just because it was such a difficult decision. Really, I would have been happy with either one of the parts first and second.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that. I really, I, after having some discussions in the community with people, I think the fairgrounds project would be, would be an amazing one to move up the scale. But my biggest concern is, is just like you stated, that we're going to go in there with this letter, and we're going to come off looking like a bunch of undecided, well winged halfwits. And, and what my concern is, is it will not only affect us in this round, but once that seed's planted, it will affect us in subsequent rounds for years to come, that when White Pine's applications roll across their desk, they're going to go, oh, well, this is what it is for now. And, and so, I'm really not comfortable with making a change midstream.
And I don't want to take that chance. I really don't. I mean.
We've had too much success with it. Okay, and I have a little added information on this. We prioritize the projects. They go to the SNPLMA board, and I have the, they have, what, three different categories. They have primary funding list, they have secondary funding list, and they have, the third list is not recommended list. So as we prioritize this, back when, I agree with all the other three commissioners, Shane and Lori and Ian, and we have a $24 million grant waiting for us. If we turn that down, and if you look at the other SNPLMA people that have put in for it, a lot of us in Clark County and other than that, we could lose our $24 million, but the chances of them accepting one of our secondaries, if we got it through to them, would be slim at best, because they would probably choose, and I'm just saying, they would probably choose one of the lower-rated primary funding lists. And so, here, they're here, there's one in Henderson, North Las Vegas, Carson City, Lincoln County, Clark County, and Southern Nevada Water Authority. Those are the ones that are on the, on the primary funding list, along with our heritage park. The other part of the heritage park, if you look a little further out, the tribe borders that park, and they're looking at additional trail-type funding that would be adjacent to the heritage park, which would add acreage that isn't responsible to White Pine County, but the tribes would be in on that. So looking at these, the heritage park was listed as number eight on the primary funding. On the secondary list, Nevada Northern Railway, just on the secondary list, was, say, the number 14. And on the, on the not recommended list, the White Pine County Fairgrounds was down to number 23, which means if we said, oops, and gave away our $24 million, as I just recorded to you, one of those other counties is going to jump all over that, and probably because they're in the category of primary funding, would be, would be looked at as favorable. So the chances of us, I mean, I, I'm with you guys, the fairgrounds, the railroad, we all for all that stuff, but the chances of us losing a $24 million project that's here in White Pine County is already, a bird in hand is better than two in a bush. So that's, that's kind of my statement, and this information is available that I have in my hands. I'll show it to anybody that wants to see it. So that being said, and I thank all the commissioners because the input was great, and all the citizens that spoke up about their preference. I think this is something that we as a commission, this is part of the hard job that we have. We have to make decisions that aren't always popular with everybody, but we have to decide what's best for White Pine County at this time, based on what has taken place when we prioritized it. So that being said, I would look for a motion to approve to write a letter or multiple letters to SNPLMA requesting reconsideration of the priorities. That's the agenda item. Do I have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion that we write a letter regarding the trail system.
And the trail system is what?
No, I'm sorry, I don't have the name of it in front of me. Lori, help me with that.
Yeah, if you would, I have, I believe what you're looking at is in the capital improvements category, the Ward Mountain Bike Trail Project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that part of this agenda, James?
So it's a reconsideration of priorities. If we want to put the trail system somewhere on the priority list, I think that fits within the agenda item.
Yeah, well, that was the whole agenda item originally, was that Mr. Horvath approached me regarding that project specifically, asking us to send a letter of support saying, hey, we support you reconsidering this project that didn't make the cut in that, in SNPLMA. It doesn't have anything to do with the ones that we prioritize. That kind of, the wording kind of got confused per our discussion at the last meeting.
Sure. So what we can do is, if you want to prioritize it, just as any number, and then we can send a letter, and it fits.
I don't, it didn't rank it out, and I don't know why. I had a conversation with Kyle also, and I recommended that he go ahead and he speak with either Aaron or Jose. Jose at the Forest Service to find out the why.
Well, he's going to. I think he's going. He was just asking us to bolster support by writing a letter saying.
I wish they had done that beforehand.
Yeah.
As part of the package.